All right, I believe we are now recording Annette. You can call the meeting to order.
Okay, thank you. So tonight is Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020. We are starting the Planning Commission meeting a little bit late. It's 6:17 right now. And I'd like to let everyone know and record into the minutes that this meeting and public hearings will be held remotely via telephone and Zoom video conferencing as indicated below. Those unable to attend via telephone or video conference and who wish to attend in public may attend and provide comment in the City Council chambers on the third floor of the Port Orchard City Hall at 216 Prospect Street. Members of the public who are at high risk for COVID-19 are strongly encouraged to attend via telephone or video conferencing, and all persons choosing to attend in person do so at their own risk pursuant to the Governor's Stay Home/Stay Healthy Proclamation number 2025 as amended. So I am going to call the meeting to order now at 6:18, and we will do the Pledge of Allegiance.
And before we do that, Annette, I just wanted the record to reflect the Governor was able to get an agreement to extend the OPMA, the Open Public Meetings Act, exceptions. And so when the agenda was printed, we thought we were going to have a computer in the Council chambers for the public to attend if they wanted. That is no longer the case. There's a sign on the door with the contact information for how to call into the meeting or how to participate via Zoom. And so if any members of the public wanted to participate, they would have to call in or use the Zoom web application.
Okay. So we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance. Again, I have my flag. You ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I think I just messed that up. How come you guys don't say it with me?
We had it on mute. I don't know. I did. It was just muted.
Yeah. If all of us try to do it, we're all going to be out of sync because of the delay in the Zoom app.
Okay, all right. So I don't think we have any audience member. Well, Barbara. So item number two is audience comments not on the agenda.
I'm good.
Okay, good. So we'll move on to item number three, approval of the minutes from May 20th.
Somebody will have to unmute themselves and make a motion to approve those, I believe.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
Is there a second?
One second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay. So number four on the agenda is the business items. And letter A, public hearing, 2020 comprehensive plan amendments. At this, do you want me to, do you want to discuss it first, or do you want me to open it up?
Um, we can go ahead and present the issue, and then you can take any testimony.
Okay.
So before you tonight for a public hearing are the 2020 comprehensive plan amendments. And this year, we have brought forward a handful of amendments. Some of them are proposed by citizens and others are, the most of them are initiated by the city. The citizen amendment that is proposed proposes to change the designated center boundary for the Sedgwick-Bethel Center. That's the center that's out near Fred Meyer. And his property had been split by the center boundary, which affected his ability to qualify for multifamily tax exemptions. And so he was asking for that map to be amended. We also have, I think about 18 or so, 16 properties that we are correcting the land use map. We had inconsistencies between our zoning map and our land use map. Many of these are public properties and churches, which we are simply cleaning up to make sure that we achieve consistency on those. And finally, and maps for each of the properties being changed are included in your packet. Finally, we are making amendments to both some land use tables and in the utilities element, we are adding some projects to the water sewer and stormwater capital facilities project list. And that will allow us to include those projects as part of our capital facility charge expenditures and build out infrastructure in support of growth for the city. And that's needed as part of the city's budget process. Finally, we are also adopting the six and 20 year transportation improvement program. We update this annually. And this is being done as we head into budget here later this summer. The budget has to be consistent with the comp plan. And so this is identifying our transportation projects as they now exist for the next six years. With that said, this has been presented previously. I think most of your questions should have been answered. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to take those. We should probably first take any public testimony on the proposed amendments before we discuss.
I'm good.
So Annette, you need to actually open the public hearing and then ask if there's any public testimony. And if there's none, then you can close it.
First, can I ask, did someone just join us?
I did. I'm just finishing getting hooked up here.
Okay, good. Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for the 2020 comprehensive plan amendment.
So Barbara, you're the only person in attendance. Did you have any comments on this?
I do not. Thank you for asking.
All right.
All right, hearing no comments or questions. I'd like to close the public hearing.
All right, any discussion on this item? And the action tonight is you would be recommending approval of this package for the City Council, and they would take it up in June or July as their agenda allows. So you would need to make a motion to recommend the amendments.
Can we see the, your little instruction document so that we have the text?
There is a motion on the staff report.
Right, exactly.
I'm scrolling as fast as I can. There you go.
I move to recommend that the City Council approve the 2020 comprehensive plan map and text amendments as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Okay. So moving on to item C, public hearing for the design guidelines revision ordinance.
All right. So the, the second hearing before you tonight is on the proposed design standards revisions. And I believe Barbara Yarrington from Quadrant is here on this issue tonight, although she previously said she didn't have any comments on it, but it was here to answer questions. We've discussed this at a couple of recent meetings. Quadrant and McCormick communities came forward and asked for some revisions to our residential design standards as it relates to development in McCormick Woods, although the changes that are proposed would apply citywide. And in your previous discussions, you agreed to, I think, eight out of the 10 changes that were requested. The changes generally dealt with the elevation of a home above the adjacent grade. Our code had a minimum elevation, and so we changed, we allow houses to be built at grade, provided they have a little bit of additional setback. There is an issue with the front door of a house being allowed to face a side yard rather than facing the street. The porches are still oriented towards the street, but this allows for a pretty common product type that Quadrant is building. Other changes include the front porch dimensions. We realized that our code required that a porch be 50% of the width of a house. And that works fine if you don't have a garage attached to your house facing the street. But when you have a garage on the front of your house, it is very hard to build, especially if your garage is wider than the habitable portion of your house. You can't really build a front porch in front of your garage door. And so we made some exceptions. So, and you can see that in these images here showing the front porches that are 50% of the width of the house, not including the space occupied by a garage. And Carrie, I don't know if you, I'm trying to think of what the other changes were off the top of my head here.
That largely covers it.
Okay. So the, the thing to do now would be to open the public hearing. And then if you would like to have discussion, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
So at this time, I'll open the public hearing for the design guidelines revision ordinance.
This is Barbara Yarrington with Quadrant Homes. We'd just like to state that we are in support of these amendments. They allow for a more divorce product type, especially one that takes into consideration topography and the Washington State factors that we have here. Thank you very much.
So knowing there's only one person in the audience, thank you, Barbara. I'd like to close the public hearing.
Right. Any discussion on this? I did want to add one point. Because of the land use committee schedule, the City Council Land Use Committee did discuss this ordinance yesterday at their land use committee meeting. I pointed out to them that the Planning Commission, like I said, I think 80% of what was requested is included in this ordinance. The 20% that was not included included allowing 30, our three car garages on lots that were only 60 feet wide. Currently, the code requires a 74 foot wide lot if you're going to allow a three car garage. And then the other change had to do with garages, allowing two car garages on townhomes that are front loaded. Our code currently limits a townhome to a one car garage, though it can be a tandem configuration. And so the land use committee said that, you know, obviously, they're going to take the Planning Commission's recommendation, but they do want to have a discussion on the items that weren't included. And so they will have some continued discussion on those two topics that were previously discussed with the Planning Commission. There's no discussion. We need a motion on this one. And I've got it on the screen for you.
I feel like we discussed this issue pretty extensively the last time we actually got to meet in person. So I'll move to recommend that the City Council approve an ordinance revising the design standard requirements in POMC 20.32.020 and 20.32.040 and 20.122.060.
I'll second that.
Nicely done. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. So the next item is item E, the public hearing on significant trees and tree canopy ordinance.
All right, this is our third hearing of the evening, and it deals with our existing significant tree chapter. And about a year ago, we had a development proposal come in that is known as the Geiger Plaid. It's on Geiger, near Blueberry in Port Orchard. And that was a site that was 100% forested. And at that, and almost all the trees on that site were significant trees. And what we learned was that when you have a code that requires significant tree replacement at a three to one ratio, and you're dealing with an entirely forested site, it is not possible to achieve that level of replanting and allow for development of urban land within the city. Our significant tree chapter was written really with preservation of one and two significant trees in older parts of the city in mind. It didn't really, it wasn't designed to handle or to accommodate development. And so we had a recommendation from one of the developers to look at a code from Snohomish County that dealt with tree canopy, which the goal is to plan development so that you achieve a certain percentage of tree canopy over the long term. In this case, our code is looking 20 years down the road so that when you plant trees today as part of a development, in 20 years, you will achieve a certain percentage of development, depending on whether it's a single family neighborhood or whether it's multifamily townhomes or other, other types of development. And so we've been working on this for, I think, almost a year now. And I believe we've gotten, we've tinkered with it enough to where everybody was satisfied at our last meeting. But we should take public testimony on this proposed ordinance and then discuss it if necessary before recommending it for council approval.
So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing for significant trees and tree canopy. Hearing no questions or comments. I'd like to close the public hearing.
So any discussion, or would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to recommend that the City Council approve the significant tree and tree canopy requirements ordinance, chapter 20.129 of the POMC.
I'll second that.
And I'm sorry, was that Phil?
Yes.
Thank you. And we had a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed?
That was an a for me as well.
So moving on. We have, item G is the discussion, a draft beekeeping ordinance.
Now, I'm going to let our code enforcement officer, Doug Price, speak to this issue. This is a new item that we're introducing tonight, and it arose out of, we had a complaint where somebody in Port Orchard had a relatively small lot and was keeping about eight beehives. And the bees were swarming the neighbors and causing issues. And we realized that a lot of cities have beekeeping rules, whether it be regulated as a nuisance or in the zoning code. The approach that we've chosen to take here is two pronged. We have already adopted an amendment to the nuisance code to state that if you keep bees and they are causing problems, or if they're hornets or yellow jackets or any other similar species, that it can be declared a nuisance. However, this is the land use portion of our toolbox for addressing this issue should it come up again. Fortunately, the issue that we had, we achieved voluntary compliance. But I'll let Doug walk you through the proposed staff report and ordinance on the topic.
Okay. And Annette, you mentioned that you have a beehive or have some familiarity. And I'm glad for that because what you have here was written by somebody who knows absolutely nothing about beekeeping, and that's me.
Oh, I don't know anything. I'm a newbie to this. I'm surprised they're still alive.
My undergraduate was medical and veterinary entomology, and I took courses in apiary.
All right. So you guys can, can bring some experience to vetting this. My only experience with it is just a handful of enforcement cases, you know, in, in 26 years of code enforcement, I have encountered this about five times. So it's not something that comes up very often. Most people who have beehives manage them well. They're not a problem. But when you do come up with a problem as we had here, we didn't have any way to deal with it. So we had 13 hives on an 8,000 square foot lot that was actually bisected by a public alley. So it was actually two 4,000 square foot lots with 13 hives on them. And very close to neighboring house. And the beekeeper claimed to be doing his best to, to manage his hives to prevent swarms. But there was apparently in the course of a year, at least four swarms from his hives. So I pulled some of this from Pierce County's beekeeping code and bits and pieces from other codes. One of the things that I learned, did a lot of research in the process and learned that it's a hugely complex issue. And there's a tremendous amount to know. And I didn't learn more than a thimble full. But and I lost my train. One of the things is that, that there are different types of bees and different types of beekeeping. Some people, not very many, but some people keep bumblebees. There are different types of hives, of honeybees. There's some different styles. And so on. And so I didn't want the city to get involved in trying to regulate the aspects of honeybee keeping. There's just way too much. We don't have any, any expertise. So trying to just keep this very simple to the aspects that might cause a nuisance, so that being the number of hives, the density. Providing water source so that the bees aren't going to neighboring properties looking for water. Providing a barrier if you're closer than 25 feet from the property line so that, so that the bees are up in the air before they fly through the neighbor's property. And then this code only with honeybee keeping. So it doesn't try to get into all of the other things that, you know, some of the codes out there also just, they specify the type of hive that you have to have. They, they restrict beekeeping to specifically to honey, to honeybees. And in doing so, then they prevent the keeping of mason bees and bumblebees and those kind of things. And I didn't think we should get into that. Those, those bees aren't generally a source of complaints. So trying to keep this just focused on, on honeybee hives, you'll see that there is, we did come up with a, you know, number of hives based on square footage. That's really kind of out of the air. It's a little bit pulled, you know, it's, I looked at other codes as a source, but there's no science to this. It was just what, you know, what seemed a reasonable place to, to make the break for those numbers. And just one other note, in the version that you have, the 050 0502 talks about roads and 100 feet from the roads and all of that. And that just didn't really make sense for, especially for the type of environment we have in Port Orchard. We don't have any agricultural land. We don't have any place where someone's going to have 50 hives on a farm or anything like that. So it's not in your version, but I took two out and just merged. Trying to find it here. Merged it into the portion into one. Okay, my, my numbers are a little different now. I merged it into one and just said, you've got the setback from property lines. And I just said that that includes roadway or easement. So just, just merge that in there. And then the other change is that the land use committee felt that there shouldn't be hives on vacant properties, on vacant lots. Hives need to be attended to. And so we made another change to make this an accessory use only. So it's not allowed on any lots where there is not a, an active principal use.
Hey Doug, for the committee's reference, the code enforcement case that we had, how big was the lot? And how many hives did he have? And how many does he have now? And, you know, is, are we, are we still having any issues with that site?
Sure. It was, the lot was 8,000 square feet, but it was really two 4,000 square foot lots with 13 hives total, most of them on one of those two lots. And we had two swarms there this spring that ended up flying through the neighbor's deck when the neighbor was out there. Neighbor and his wife were out there on their deck. And all of a sudden here, they have swarms of bees looking for a new home. While we were working on trying to come up with what we were going to do with regulation, there ended up being some back and forth between the beekeeper and the neighbor not, well, they kept it civil, but it was, there were, there were words exchanged. But in the end, the beekeeper, before we even got involved, had already decided to move 11 of the hives to some land he has out in the county. And I guess he has some agreement with the neighbor that the neighbor felt that two hives would be a reasonable number to remain on the property. And so that's been completed. There are only two hives now on that property. And just an aside of just kind of interest, there was a, that was not the only complaint about the hives. We actually had a complaint, several complaints from the business district down along Bay Street, because they thought that the restaurant down there must be spewing grease out of their ventilation system because there was something grease like all over the cars in the parking lot and handrails and just all over the place down there. And half, over a period of a few months of investigation, we figured out that it was pollen and bee droppings. There were so many bees flying through that area that they were just covering the vehicles with their droppings. So that was, that was another source of complaints about that particular operation.
So this is only, here is an introduction tonight. Obviously, we're going to continue to refine this. And once the Planning Commission is comfortable, we can schedule it for a public hearing. And so we've already made a few changes since the land use committee meeting yesterday to what is before you. So we really need to know, what is your comfort level with what is being presented? Would you like it to come to hearing in July? Do you have questions? Or would you like to bring it back for more of a working session in July? But I'll defer to the bee experts in our, on our planning commission here.
I'd prefer to have a working program in July. And if I can get a copy of that in a Word document so I can twiddle with it, I'd appreciate it.
We will get that to you promptly.
Thank you.
Thanks. Very interested in helping the bees.
I want to go back to just one question. You had said, did I hear right, that you said if, if there is a vacant lot, but it's your lot, you can't put bees on that?
That was a change that was made from yesterday's land use committee meeting. There was a, there was a concern about, you know, what if someone has untended hives on a vacant lot and a kid or a dog gets on the property and there's nobody there to tend them? You know, that's, I think that's, that's something that certainly is open for discussion because essentially, yeah, it, if you have multiple lots and you've got woods and you've got acreage and all of that, the way it's the, with the change that was made from yesterday's meeting, you would not be able to have the hives on any of the lots that don't, that are vacant.
And from a beekeeper standpoint, that would be unfortunate. I think there are ways around that to address potentially a kid or a dog getting into it and at the same time be able to utilize the vacant lot. I think there's ways we can write it to, to also benefit the beekeeper from predators too. So.
I would say, I don't think it was our intent to say that if you have two lots and you live on one, that you can't have hives on the other. It's that if you have a site and it's multiple lots, as long as somebody is there either commercially or residentially to take care of it, I think the intent was to allow the bees. As being that we're a city, we don't really have purely agricultural uses in the city. It's, it's pretty uncommon to just have a farm or a honey, you know, a honey production facility in the city. So I agree, there's a way around that. But I think that the main issue is, is somebody nearby to, to handle that. Or maybe there's a minimum lot size. If you're going to keep bees on a larger site, maybe On a larger site, maybe it's okay, but a smaller site in a residential. Area, maybe that's more of a problem.
Doug, if I could ask, you see this about once every five years?
Something like that, yeah, I, I ran into it twice in, in 18 years in Lakewood, I ran into bee issues twice. And I think it may have come up once when I was with the Pierce County Health Department back in the 90s, and then this is the first time. Here in Port Orchard, so it's, yeah, it doesn't come up very often.
How does it typically resolve itself if there are no regulations?
The two in Lakewood. One of them resolved itself. It was actually the president of the Beekeepers Association at the time, who was the problem and he was not managing his hives and. They were taken over by yellow jackets and he wasn't providing. Water source, but he was also a hoarder and his whole situation was kind of falling apart, and so I think that resolved itself just through. Family conflict and, and. Kind of. Just decline of his situation, the other, I don't remember what happened, it was. An actual honey company that. I think it may have been a temporary situation, they were located right next to. The playground of an elementary school and they all of a sudden brought in a whole pallet load of, of bee hives. And we had. Hundreds of thousands of bees. Frequenting the ball fields and the, the playground. And my recollection is they weren't really receptive to. When they were approached about it, but I. It didn't remain on my radar either because we didn't have any regulations and. And we didn't adopt any or because it actually went away, it was a long time ago, so I don't really remember.
Okay, thanks Doug, so, you know, I'm happy to join my fellow commissioners in the interest in a working session. I think, I wonder how much, and I'm happy to listen to the department's. Interest in having these kinds of regulations, you know. I don't. I, I struggle with whether it's absolutely necessary and we want it in code. But I will follow the guidance of the department and the wishes of my fellow commissioners.
You know, I kind of think too, it's, it's kind of like. How cities now allow to have chickens. And chickens attract coyotes. You know, but we don't have anything. Not that the, you know, I'm, I'm good with listening about the bees and not just because I have bees, I think it's. You know, we may need it, but I, I think it's kind of, it'd be kind of like us writing a code. That you can have chickens because you'll attract coyotes and then the neighbors are going to lose their cats. So.
This sounds to be more like a nuisance code issue. How to prevent the bees from becoming a nuisance to neighbors.
Right, Doug, didn't you say that you already had addressed the, the issue using the nuisance code?
Well, we did, but it's, the problem with, with just doing the piece of the nuisance code is it doesn't really give any definition of what. You know, how it becomes a nuisance, you know, what's the threshold? And to, you know, as we looked at, and that's one of the ways that a lot of. Cities and counties have done it is they just throw something in the nuisance code. But when we looked at it with our attorney, we were looking at the fact that they're, they're making. Limitations on the number of hives per acre and so on in the nuisance code. And in effect, they're regulating a land use outside of the land use code, and so there was some concern about that. Yeah, realistically, I wish that we had resolved the, the one complaint before we got down this road. But. The other side of that is that. On that rare occasion that we do have a problem. You know, if we don't have any way of dealing with it, then. You know, then we have a nuisance that continues. So one of the, what I tried to do here was keep this as minimal as possible. Although I made it a little longer than some of the others because I was trying to make sure it actually protected. The beekeepers as well as putting in some regulations.
I've displayed what we adopted into the nuisance code, I don't have a signed copy of the ordinance yet and it's not codified. But section 19 here is the. Seven lines of text that have been added to the nuisance code. So it, it does give us some tools, it's just. You know, enforcing a nuisance is different than enforcing the zoning code. But it comes up rarely enough that, you know, I, I don't necessarily think we have to do something with the zoning code, I think it, when it comes time to actually. Enforce it, or if somebody calls the city and says, what am I allowed to do? The answer today is, don't be a nuisance. And you're, and you're fine, and the answer under the other code is, well, how big is your lot? And if you're in a, if you're in a subdivision like at McCormick Woods. And your lot is less than 10,000 square feet, the answer is, well, you can have two hives. So it's, you know, it, it's approaching the, the issue from two very different directions.
Okay, I see your point.
Well, it sounds like this is something that we'll, we'll do a working session on and. You know, I, I, I really like what you've put in the nuisance code, but. You know, let's discuss it further and, and give it its due diligence, Doug. Thank you for your work, it's really remarkable, I know you put a lot of hard work into it and it shows.
Thank you, and just one other note I'll throw out there is that I have been communicating with the president of the. What is it, West Sound Beekeepers Association, and she. Reviewed the draft and we did make some changes based on her review. Didn't make all the changes that she would have wanted, but she'll also be. Present at the, at the, at the next session on this, and so she'll be also adding her comments. So I promise to let her know when this comes up.
When I, when, when you send me a.
Did you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to ask Carrie to include that paragraph on the nuisance code with. The, the. Word doc on the. On this code, okay?
Doug, can you incorporate that?
No, he's asking you to nail it to him.
Yeah, just a copy.
Oh, yeah, certainly. I've had all, all emails to everyone.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you Doug.
Yeah, thank you.
So our last item is. Item H, introduction of Ruby Creek. Subarea plan designs.
All right, and I want to first start out on this issue by saying, I did not mean to send you the entire draft document of our plan, that is a working draft and I attached the wrong file. So I only intended to give you these graphics and a map and the, the site plan, the two dimensional plan was left out of the packet. We have been working on this for about six months now. In, in December, we hired an intern who's been helping us with this plan and we also had a consultant contract for some help with some of these graphics. And we, we did a survey for the area, we didn't get a whole lot of feedback. I'm going to actually share the, the site plan document first. So the, the Ruby Creek neighborhood is. Hang on a second, I'm trying to make this bigger. It's the area near Sydney and Sedgwick Road. And it is a designated center in our comprehensive plan, and so for each of our centers, our, we've identified a goal to prepare a subarea plan that charts out. How things are going to develop and how much growth we want to see. What that growth looks like and what infrastructure is needed to support it. And so we hired a, a firm out of Seattle, Makers Architecture, to do some site planning exercises and they came up with a few alternatives. And based on the very limited public feedback that we had and in talking to the Public Works Department. We sort of settled on the drawing that you see here and. It is a portrait view, so that it's a little small here, I'm going to zoom in a little bit more. So essentially, this is the, the north-south road here is the Sydney Road Southwest Corridor. The Chevy dealership is on Hubd Road here. Glenwood Road, this is, we kind of. Informally refer to this as Little Glenwood, it, it connects Sydney over to. The big Glenwood Road at where it turns into Sedgwick. And then as you move south, you hit the Sedgwick. Road intersection, you've got Albertson's down here and then there's the existing. There's Manasushi, the apartments, the clinic. A bit of existing development. And so. This whole area has really good freeway access, it's on major transit lines. Both providing access to the, the new passenger ferry at Southworth as well as the, the West Seattle Ferry. But also it has bus stop, a bus stop that will take you to the waterfront in Port Orchard and to the shipyard, so this is a really good location for. People to commute either to Seattle or, or to the naval shipyard for work. And right now, I, I would. Assume if Marcus was still here, I think he lived in, in one of these existing apartments at one point in time, but. Not a whole lot to do if you live out in this neighborhood, other than go to a handful of restaurants or go to the grocery store. So when we, when we set out to do, to prepare a subarea plan, you know, there's, there's about 400 apartments there and about 275 existing jobs. And most of the people in the apartments, as evidenced by our survey results. Were, didn't really have a desire to express what they wanted their neighborhood to look like, and I think it's because. It's 99% renters and. So when, when we got time to do the site planning exercise, we had very little to go on from the public and very little interest in this area. Except from a few property owners that had, had previously brought forward plans for development. At the south end of the corridor here, this is the, the vacant pad next to Albertson's. We've been working with Rush Development who developed the other apartments out there, and they've been working on a live-work concept where they would have. Little live-work apartments along Sydney and Sedgwick that would actually be storefront, so if somebody wanted to run a business out of the front of their unit. You can actually have a storefront or it can be used as an apartment, and that's a way to sort of manage the. Usually you need a whole lot of residential critical mass before the commercial becomes viable, and so this kind of creates. An ability to meet a residential demand while preserving the commercial flexibility into the future. At the north end of the corridor, on this site at Hubd and Sydney on the east side of Sydney. This is an apartment concept that we've been working with on a developer. And they are real close to submitting from the sounds of things, I think they've got about 230 apartments here. And so initially, they wanted to do a gated apartment community and we really pushed them to try to bring these apartments out to the street and really make this feel more like a neighborhood. And less like a private. Apartment complex. So those were the two projects that were on the books that really, you know, kind of influenced some of our design. The other big constraints is the Ruby Creek Corridor, which we've, we've coined this neighborhood, the Ruby Creek Neighborhood, because it really doesn't have an identity, identity other. Than if you want to call it the Albertson's Neighborhood or the Lowe's Neighborhood. Or maybe the Sydney Glen, the elementary school is there. But you have Blackjack Creek and Ruby Creek, which come together on the east side of the center, and there's this big flood plain out here that's currently pasture, but it's, it's pretty. There's some wetlands out here that are shown on this map and we, we've tried to estimate those buffers. But our thought was that a public park serving this part of the city, if we're going to have a lot of growth. Would probably be appropriate and could be made adaptive to the fact that this is a flood plain and that there's critical areas and it would facilitate some restoration. Educational opportunities, recreational opportunities and walking paths. And then the other, the other part of the neighborhood that we felt was lacking is there's no, there was no center. And so what we tried to do, we have. Unfortunately, two of the properties, the house that my mouse is over now and this house here are actually in the county and not in the city, we. The, the urban growth boundary doesn't include all of the frontage here along Sydney. So we really looked at, at these couple of properties on the west side and then this big piece. We call the Kruger Property is kind of being the focal point of the neighborhood. And we wanted to create kind of a little Main Street feel that would be walkable and kind of create a center to, to the neighborhood. And what you'll notice is this is being set up so that it's walkable, there's storefronts along the street, there's parking on the street. And then the parking lots are actually tucked behind the buildings, and then there's some, some multifamily development. That would support the commercial or mixed-use development along the street frontage. And in all, you know, we're, we're targeting about 1,600 additional residential units in the neighborhood is the, the high end. Depending on how tall people would build buildings. This could end up being. Less intense than that and, and as a center, which I think we've talked about before, PSRC has Centers criteria. And if you accommodate a sufficient level of growth, you can get federal transportation funding to build some of these projects. So they want you to have at least 80% commercial or 80% residential, but if you go above 80%. It really ceases to function in any balanced sort of way, it, it either becomes all residential. Or all commercial and, and it requires vehicle trip, a whole lot more vehicle trips in and out of the neighborhood. So. So this is the site plan that we based the renderings that were in your packet on. And these were just finished last week. This shows this first rendering, which let me zoom in here a little bit. All right, so this first rendering is looking to the northeast on Sydney Road, so this is Sydney Road. And this is this main intersection that is planned. Along that on the south side of Ruby Creek and. We, we kept the buildings on the west side at one story for two reasons. Number one, it, it just made for a better. View of the neighborhood by not having a tall building, building in the foreground, but also the power lines, the transmission lines run along the frontage here. And if you have buildings out to the street and transmission lines. The cost of undergrounding transmission lines are probably going to make a project not feasible. But we still would like to probably try to underground power as much as possible, and so the idea is that these could all be. Up to a five-story mixed-use building, but more than likely you're going to see three stories because that seems to be what is currently viable in Port Orchard based on the economics of, of development. In the city at this time. But the, you'll see that there's on-street parking, there's bulbouts to make it easy to cross the street. And then the, the apartments are tucked kind of behind this, this core area. This is the second angle looking from the north, and while these properties are currently zoned commercial-mixed-use. You know, there's, there's not a ton of commercial demand at, at this time, and so we would expect these to, to develop as apartments. But they are allowed to become storefronts if, if people wanted to extend and have a kind of a second area of downtown. And I don't remember if any of you came along with our, our walking tour about a year and a half ago when we did the design guidelines, maybe, maybe longer. Maybe it's been longer than, than that since. We chartered the bus and went over and, and looked at Mill Creek and Bothell and a couple of different areas. But Mill Creek actually had a similar feature where there was a creek bisecting their main street in their, their new city center. And they had the core to the south and then they had a second area of commercial to the north. And so this is a similar dimension to that, that Mill Creek Center. But, but probably slants a little bit more residential just because we don't have quite enough commercial land. Especially for parking and we don't have, the, the centers are quite a bit smaller than what is in Mill Creek, just in terms of a land area. It's a similar length of corridor though.
Nick.
Yes.
You're here, is it heading towards town or away from town?
This is looking south, so this is Sydney and Hubd is the intersection here and the Chevy dealer is, is just off the page on the left on.
So this is heading towards Sydney Glen?
No, Sydney Glen is, is at the bottom of the page here at this corner.
I meant the, I meant the development is heading away from Albertson's towards Sydney Glen.
Nope, Albertson's is at the top of the page here.
Yeah, no, that, we're saying the same thing.
Okay.
Thanks.
So. Our goal here, we have our intern for about another two months and she's going to help us put together the final. Draft plan. And I would like, my goal at this point is to have a presentation of the, the complete plan. At your July meeting, but I wanted to introduce the concept to you so that between now and July. You can maybe visit the neighborhood, take a look at these properties and, and just study. The information that's been provided so that you can provide constructive feedback. And then our hope would be then to, to schedule a public hearing so that the public can provide any input on this in August. And then our hope would be then to, to schedule a public hearing so that the public can provide any input on this in August. Because these, there's only 400 apartments out there. And I think a lot of the people who rent those apartments aren't necessarily local, like from Port Orchard families. I'm, I'm, I'm guessing there's not going to be a huge turnout for this, but I could, I could be wrong on that. We did distribute survey mailers through the apartment complexes. And I think we had three responses total and two of those were from property owners, not renters of the apartment. So there was very little interest from the people who actually live here today. But it's, it's the people who live there who were, were trying to plan something for, to make, to make their experience of living in this area better. And also to kind of create a, a second sort of tiny little downtown center in, in Port Orchard that becomes an attraction. And we get some additional restaurants and just someplace to go and, and enjoy your life. So with that, I'm happy to, to hear any feedback that you have initially or answer any questions. Oh, this is the third slide. This is the, the Rush Development Live Work Units. And you can see we've, we've kind of shown a little plaza out here at the corner. And these are, are commercial storefronts, but could also be residential units on the ground floor.
So when you have all this land being developed into apartments and you talk about like restaurants and stuff coming, it, it doesn't, it looks like all the like big pieces of land, like for nice restaurants to come over here. Is, is there any of that left?
Well, there, there is, but I think the, the really important thing is that, and I, in my background, prior to coming to Port Orchard, I was out in Eatonville, which is a rural community of about 2,500 people. And Eatonville's downtown, it, it had some good bones, it had businesses present, but they really weren't thriving because there wasn't a critical mass of people to support them. And the, the, and you can have two different types of commercial development. You can have something that everybody drives to and has to park at. And the amount of land that is required for that type of development, we do not have in this location. It, I mean, parking would consume all of the land and you'd have a handful of fast food or chain type restaurants. By building the storefronts that you see, the shop fronts, I mean, this is, I think about around 16,000 square feet of retail in addition to the existing, the Mana Sushi site. And actually there's a site to the south of this that also is planned for commercial development. So you're, you're going to end up with probably 30,000 square feet of retail and 1,600 apartments, which should give enough local population to, to, so that between people driving to the neighborhood and the people that live there, you can support a, a thriving downtown. Also just outside of the center, I'm going to go back to the map is the Stetson Heights subdivision is just off the page here and they're building sidewalks all the way into this neighborhood. So, so anybody who's buying a house, a single family house out at Stetson Heights is going to be able, is going to be, you know, three quarters of a mile here. And if they wanted to go for a walk and grab coffee or, or get out of their neighborhood without getting in their car, that's an opportunity that they have and that, that's the first 299 lots of that development. They have a second phase, I think that's going to bring another hundred. And they have a multifamily component. And then behind Stetson Heights and connecting through Stetson Heights is McCormick East, which has never been subdivided. But he's, I think they've got about, about 80 acres or a hundred acres. It's also probably going to be single family. So you're talking about 900 single family residences within walking distance of a neighborhood like this. And so if, if you, if you've got kids that want to go grab ice cream or coffee, this is someplace that you could walk with your kids and get on the, the new pathway along Sedgwick and, and come down here and, and grab something rather than having to get in your car.
What are the plans for Sedgwick between the freeway and Sydney?
So we, in our, in our, in our capital facility plan already, we've planned a widening project for Sedgwick Road. And so I know our, our top three complaints in the city are probably Bethel and this section of Sedgwick Road between Sydney and the freeway. So that's about a, I think it's about a $7 million project in our capital facilities plan. And we are collecting traffic impact fees towards that project. And so we're, we're in the process of updating our traffic impact fee. And I'm, I'm expecting that each apartment's going to pay about $3,000 towards traffic impact fees. And plus you've got traffic impact fees coming from McCormick Woods and Stetson Heights. And those, it's going to take development to finance a project like that because we have no dedicated revenue stream for transportation other than your $20 car tabs, which I think we bring in about $200,000 a year. And we're talking a, a $7 million project. Our gas tax revenue is about, I think last time I heard it was like 40 or $50,000 a year that we get from the state in gas tax. And everything else is property tax or sales tax for, for paying for projects like this. So it's going to take development and probably traffic getting worse before it gets better in order for us to get to fix these existing problems.
What happens though, when you like fix that part of the road and then you get up to the overpass?
And then you go to Sedgwick. That's a state facility.
I know, but are you guys like working together like to, because even going up Sedgwick is a mess.
Definitely. So, so we, there was a Wash Dot Transportation Study that went from all the Tacoma Narrows Bridge all the way through Gors. And it looked at every interchange between those two points. And they determined actually that the, the poorest performing interchange in the entire system was the Sedgwick, the Sedgwick interchange at 16. So Wash Dot's well aware of it. Unfortunately, that bridge is going to have to be widened at some point. But in the interim, replacing signals with roundabouts, similar to what's at the, the Borgan exit in Gig Harbor, is something that could probably make that bridge last quite a few more years. But that ultimately is going to be a Wash Dot project. But we can certainly improve traffic flow to the interchange and specifically getting a right turn lane so that anybody trying to get on to southbound 16 towards Tacoma from this section of Sedgwick here. Anybody trying to, to make that right turn from Sedgwick onto southbound 16. If we provided a drop lane, I think that would improve things greatly at Lowe's. It's going to be a difficult to build project because of the stormwater pond and the elevation of the roadway relative to the creek. I mean, it's, it's definitely a challenging project, but it's a project that we are, we are planning on doing. And then as far as Sedgwick going on the other side of 16, we just completed the Bethel Sedgwick Corridor Plan about a year and a half ago now. And we actually just applied for a federal grant to build phase one of the Bethel Corridor. I don't think we're going to find out on that grant for another month or two. But if it doesn't work this time, we're going to keep resubmitting it. And if there is a, if we end up with another round of stimulus as part of the coronavirus package, there is talk that there could be a, an infrastructure package. And by, by having already submitted this for the federal Tiger Grant Program, they may add funds to that program and simply fund more projects that have been submitted. So our hope is that we might be able to slip in if, if the federal government decides to spend more money on an infrastructure program and that would help us take the first step on Bethel, which would be, I think Salmonberry to Sedgwick and widening that with sidewalks and making that part of the road more functional.
That'd be nice.
Yes, it would. We have, I think our, our transportation, you know, you voted on the comp plan tonight. If you looked at the tip, I think we have about a hundred million dollars worth of projects. And our annual budget for the city for, for everything, including our water and sewer utilities is about $8 million. So to find a, a little bit of extra money, you know, every year, we are a long way from having a hundred million dollars. And it's going to take federal support, state support and, and the traffic impact fee program to build out the needed infrastructure. And ultimately those impact fees depend on us approving development. And, and this is a plan to, to probably get, you know, maybe, maybe 2,500 residents here in 1,600 apartments. Ballpark and, and probably two or 300 more jobs.
Hey Nick, that little farmhouse on the corner that you called Little Glenwood there, have you acquired that property?
No, that is privately held. I, I think that there's two parcels here. There's the Waters property here. I do not believe there's any intent to develop that in the near future, but we're, we're certainly planning for the eventual redevelopment of that. And then the same owner is, is on the east side of the street owns this parcel on the west side. And so you'll see that we've aligned the proposed driveways so that we had, create a four-way intersection rather than having offset driveways. And that allows us to put it in crosswalks and make the neighborhood more connected.
Okay.
And since, I guess as long as I've got you here, I don't think any of you were able to come on the, the Mill Creek Neighborhood Tour. So I'm going to, I think I will zoom in on Google Street View and show you that area. Oops. And I don't know if any of you have spent any time in the, the Mill Creek Town Center. But, see if it loads here. I mentioned they have a creek kind of running through the middle of their town center. And so they've actually got a bridge here with some amenities and some interpretive signage. But they have, and I have to, I've got your, your pictures all in the way of my little, my icon here. But when you zoom into Street View here, on both sides of this creek, you've created kind of a nice little downtown. And this is probably narrower and more, less of a thoroughfare than what Sydney will ultimately be. But it's a similar concept to kind of creating a little downtown along the Sydney corridor. And at the end of this, you even have a, a grocery store down here at the end, similar to, to Albertson's. And so from a north-south dimension, the Sydney corridor is very similar in length to this. It's just that Mill Creek is not as constrained by critical areas in the freeway. Mill Creek has all these apartments on the other side of the state highway. And then there is a big critical area here, but then they have a ton of houses on the other side as well. And it creates a fairly vibrant streetscape where a lot of people spend time.
So Nick, you referred to this, not to, to the Sydney Road one as a downtown?
No, it's, it's like a main street area.
Okay. Cause I just wondered, because it seems like our city is like really spread out, like we have, you know, the south, the over by Bank of America, we have downtown, we have out here by that Albertson's, we have where Safeway is. And it just kind of seems really spread out. And I, so you had referred to it as downtown a couple of times and I didn't know if that's what you do in cities. If you have like downtown one, downtown two.
Well, and, and I'm going to, I'm trying to pull up our, I think my internet is being a little bit slow right now. And also my tabs are hiding behind the menu. We adopted the center's policy or our center's policy in the comp plan when we adopted in 2006. And so, so really when you look at our comp plan, we've identified all of these little centers and all of them are going to function a little bit differently, but these are all kind of core neighborhoods. And it's similar, if you go to, you know, I live in Tacoma, but if I'm in the Proctor neighborhood in Tacoma, if you've spent any time there, it's kind of got its own little downtown and there's a neighborhood on all sides of it. And so the center's strategy really seeks to kind of create destinations within your city that become hubs of activity. And we're prioritizing investment so that these areas develop and become vibrant. And then the, the residential areas around them help support development. So, so there's the other, on the other side of, of SR 16, you've got the Sydney or the Sedgwick and Bethel Center, which we don't have any plan for at this point in time. And that'll probably look different than the, the Salmonberry-Bethel intersection. Or, you know, the Walmart Safeway area is already mostly developed. There's, there's not a lot of potential to add there, but there's some. So, but, but this Ruby Creek neighborhood is really the biggest blank slate that we have in the city because there's so much undeveloped land. And it's important that, that our regulations and our plan help guide that in a way that creates an attractive, vibrant, you know, neighborhood. I think that if you go up Mile Hill, I mean, you've got Albertson's in the movie theater there and there's some apartments around. But it's not a really easy place for people to walk around. It's not a place where people sit outside and enjoy themselves. The only place that we have right now where you can do that is downtown. So this, it does sort of help create kind of a second downtown. And when you look at, I'm, I'm trying to think of some other examples. One of the examples that are, the company we hired to help lay out this plan, they worked on something over in Newcastle and I'll see if I can find it on the map. There's Newcastle, I think. I don't know Newcastle very well, so it's going to take me a minute to find this area. I think this is it here. Oh, there it is. So they just put in a, a similar area. And this, this was undeveloped land prior to creating a, a plan similar to what's in Ruby Creek. And so they've designed, this is Coal Creek Parkway. They've designed these storefront type developments with sidewalks and making it pedestrian oriented. And then they have some taller mixed use buildings with commercial on the ground floor further back in the neighborhood. And so these types of things are being developed all over the Puget Sound as a way to create cohesive neighborhoods and provide people who, who are living in apartments, something to do that they don't have to get in their car and drive to. So this is a, you know, it's a similar concept and it's, it's not for everyone. But if you, if it's between living in an apartment that is just a sea of parking or living in an apartment where you can go downstairs and grab a burger or have a beer with your, your friends. I think most people would probably prefer something where there's a little bit more to do within walking distance of their house.
So we're going to make it look like Ruston?
Ruston's expensive.
Ruston is nice.
It is, it is. We, it's, it's not going to be as nice as Ruston purely because we don't have the waterfront or the ability to command those types of rents. But, you know, striving for something like what you see here is certainly within the realm of possibility. So any further thoughts or questions?
Well, that in itself is going to create higher rent, you know, having that burger downstairs and the, and the opportunity to have a beer and, and the supermarket close by. It's a, the idea is kind of like Proctor, actually I know Proctor really well. And, you know, they put in those huge apartments there and those are pretty high dollar apartments as well, or condos, whatever you want to call them. But.
I, I live within 100 feet of the next one they're proposing.
Oh, they are proposing another, another one.
Yeah, right next to the post office in Proctor there, the, the auto body shop is going away. And they're proposing 95 units on a 15,000 square foot lot. But these, these are live work units. So this is an example of similar to what we're going to have on Sedgwick, although I think the Sedgwick ones will have more storefront windows. These could be set up as like a little barber shop or a law office or an accountant. But they can also be used as an apartment. And so the, the door faces the street. If they want to put up a sign and run a business out of there, they can. If they want to actually remove the facade and make a full-on glass storefront, it's, it's something that can be altered. But because there's not enough demand for commercial space right now, they will, they will function as residential units. So, so anyway, that's the concept we've come up with. And we will have a present, a, a bigger presentation of all the ins and outs of the plan at your July meeting. That's what we're aiming for right now.
Way to be ambitious, Nick. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Love the concept.
Great.
Yeah, I love the concept too.
So are we, anybody have any more questions or comments?
Let me just extend my apologies for being late today and confirm our next meeting is July 7th. Is that correct?
I, I believe it's the first Tuesday. Yes, the 7th.
Right. Great.
So by being late, you missed out on the gold star, but maybe next time.
I'll have to get that gold star now.
All right. So nothing else? That's it?
Anything else, Carrie, for the good of the order?
That's it. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. It's good. All right, well, thank you, everybody. It's good seeing everyone. And so I am going to adjourn the planning commission meeting for Tuesday, June 2nd, 2020.
Thank you, good night.
Thank, thank you.
Take care, guys.
Bye, everyone.
Goodbye.